There are the four or five that stand out as being fairly important in health related ways. Brother Francis, Women's Crisis Salvation Army and Senior Citizens for sure. There are some others that are in that category or a little below it, maybe Safe Harbor. KMXT probably deserves more money. The thing that I find most puzzling is that in fiscal year 2017, we gave 267,000 and in '21 we gave 126,000, which is less than half. And I think we need to do better than less than half of 2017. Inflation has increased by 13% since 2017. So we need to do better. It looks like the state is going to have a little more money from increased oil prices. So I think we want to perhaps 5,000 for the little guys and maybe 25 or 30 for the big guys.
Okay, thank you Scott. By the way, the numbers went down because I thought you were on the assembly that made that decision. But it might've been right before you got on. The assembly directed the manager to phase out nonprofits, which he did last year. And we put it back in, we being the Borough Assembly, put it back in. But there was none in the original manager's budget because he was told by previous assemblies. That's what they wanted to see. I agree with you that with the extra money and it looks like we're going to get full funding on our bonds, we won't be scrambling quite as hard as we usually are. And I think that a lot of these organizations deserve more money because they do a job for our community. And you're right, KMXT by the way, was one that we gave more money to last year. And the biggest reason for that was all the work they do when we have tsunami warnings or any kind of any kind of need for public information to put it out for for public health or whatever during an emergency. And I think that's one of the reasons that we jacked them up a little bit last year. And I agree, they probably could use a little bit more. Any other people have any comments? Scott, aren't I going to ask you because I can't see your face? And if you're waving a hand, I'll ask you if you want to add anything.
Not at this time. I was going to wait and see what everyone else had to say.
All right, that sounds fair. Anybody else have anything to say? Jeff Smith and then Jared Griffin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Assembly Member Smiley with regards to the follow up as to how the money was utilized the previous year that was given out. And as I look at it and do a quick count of it this evening, it looks like we're classifying about 22 of these organizations as considered small with about a half dozen that are larger. And even at the $5,000 price for those smaller ones, you're still over $100,000. And if you look at that $25,000 mark for larger ones, you're another 125,000 and you're back to a funding level of 2018. So I do think that it's important that we put a number there for the smaller ones. With the understanding that without looking at the whole picture of the budget, I can't really make a commitment as to that money is really going to be there at that to that level until we get through the whole budget process. But I think for equity sake, I think we ought to probably put a number in there that says up to, you know, X amount. And then we can look at that as we kind of go through the whole budget process this spring. I am inclined to look at those organizations that do provide kind of essential services to the community, whether that be the food bank or the Brother Francis Shelter. I would also look at KMXT and say that that does provide an essential service to this community. Through every tsunami warning that we've had this year or alert or evacuation, they're on the radio keeping the community informed and without them, people don't have that information. So I think that looking at those essential services and prioritizing those, that would be where my mind is at. But I do think putting a number for the for the others that's out, you know, out on that application is probably an important consideration.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. We'll go to Jared and then to James.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said so far. I think we should look at an increase to the to the total amount. I would also throw my support behind KMXT as as an essential service, working with them closely the past several years. I wonder if, you know, I really have very little interest in scoring all of these grant applications. And I know that in years past, the assembly has wasted, or not wasted, that's the wrong word, I apologize, but spent a lot of time on a relatively small pot of money. And I think I think of anything that, yeah, we can identify essential nonprofits that clearly fit within our powers and responsibilities to give larger chunks of money to and direct the Borough Manager to develop contracts or grant contracts for them. But these smaller, like 3,000, 4,000, $5,000 grant contracts, I don't even know if that really does that even fit with our oversight. You know, we don't approve, you know, these small contracts that come through the Borough's office anyway. So, you know, I think it would be a lot easier on us, maybe easier on the Borough Manager and Megan's office if we just identified a pot of money for what we call essential services and then one pot of money for everything else. And then let Megan's office and the Borough Manager do the grant application, do the scoring and do it just like a normal contract kind of process that way. I think that would save us quite a bit of time and headache. And it would save nonprofits quite a headache also having to feel, having to put on the dog and pony show that they feel like they have to put on every year, asking and justifying and validating this money. So I'm for one big pot of money for what we decide are essential organizations or essential services. And then just one other pot to let the Borough Manager and Megan to go through and score and rank and do all of that for us. The other alternative that I see is that we could just contract with the Kodiak Community Foundation and say, here's our process. Here's the money. You guys figure it out with the parameters that we that we've set. I think that's another possibility to explore too. But just to take the headache out of what is a really small part of the budget and really doesn't deserve, I think, as much attention as we sometimes are nickel and diming all of this. But that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Jared. James.
Let's see, where do I start? I have a couple of things. Number one, the Kodiak Island Food Bank was taken over by the Salvation Army back in FY 2020. And that's why you see the difference between the ask from Kodiak Island or the give to Kodiak Island Food and Bank dropping off completely. And you see the Salvation Army going up to 20,000 because that's all they asked for at the time because they were just getting started. And you could see that increase went up to 25,000. I guess the second thing is we already have two different allotments, one for large and one for small. I think that they're all essential. They all do service to the community. Some of them just don't need as much because of the services that they provide. The other thing is on the application, really the first, number one, I think is good. Number two is financial information, which is how much are you asking for? And then provide a budget of how you're going to expend the funds. I think that's all you really need. Out of number two is those two items. And then number three, yes or no answer on that is fine. And then did they get a grant amount in '21 or '22? And that's, that's all I would have on there. I wouldn't have any of the other stuff on there. You know, signature, a lot of the time signatures are missed, names are missed, all kinds of information like that. And we still award money to them, whether that's that that information is there. Or Megan has to go back to them three or four times to get the the information for the assembly. And then, as I said last two weeks ago or last week, that half the information isn't there and we still award. And Megan has tracked down information over and over and over and over. And as was said, spinning wheels or just a lot of time has been used to get information two and three times because it's not in the original application. And we don't really need all that other stuff. We don't need the IRS filings if we, I don't see a purpose for that because nobody ever looks at those anyway until the last minute. So let's narrow this down. Five questions. Who are you? How much do you want? Did you get funds last year and how are you going to spend the funds that we give you this year? That's four questions. That's all you need. And let's get on with business.
Okay, I see a lot of people nodding their heads. So would it be safe to say to Megan and Roxanne, simplify it even more along those lines? I don't see anybody shaking their head no or hitting their head against the wall. Everybody was shaking their head yes to what James just said. And I agree that let's make it as simple as possible. We do want to know what they're going to spend it on. As Scott Smiley said, we'd like to know what they spent last year's on. We could ask that question just so we do know that the money is being spent where we want it or where we intended it to be spent. And with that, I will move on to Joseph.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's a good point. James made, I like his idea there. I'd just like to say that I think that it is important to know how they spend the money that they've gotten got before. So that's important as well. But when we're talking about KMXT, I know that during some of the tsunami warnings that we had when I was in Yuzinki, that was very important. Part of our evacuation was while we're sitting on a hill, we'd listen to them to find out what was going on. So I think that they are very essential to us. So I agree with most of what everybody said, all good points.
Hey, thank you, Joseph. Scott Art, do you wish to chime in at this point? Scott Art, are you still there or did we lose you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I agree with what Megan was saying that it would work better if we had a limit on there. And I would say the $5,000 at this point on the small.
Okay, so the directions then to staff would be to simplify the, even though you simplified it already, simplify it more. And also, we have had in the past, the larger takes and the smaller takes. And I think you can identify them all just by looking at, well, you can't buy Brother Francis because they missed out on applying for it last year due to the fact that they were too busy spending all the money that was coming from the feds for the homeless. And there was no, we were trying to be a little bit harder last year and maybe the year before too, and make sure people had to put in their application. So they missed out. So let's make sure we include those. We have about four or five then with the larger amount. Kodiak Public Broadcasting Corporation, we can have them in either large or put them in in the between, depending on what we think they need because they are pretty essential, especially during emergencies. And then a $5,000 cap and everything else, if you guys can put that together for us and bring it, we'll bring it back maybe next work session and get everybody's okay. And then we'll move on because we don't know what's going to happen until we get to the budget. As Jeff says, we can't really say, well, we're going to give you all this money until we get to the budget. I think this year we'll find that we're not going to be a stretch. We were able to do it last year. I think we'll certainly be able to do it this year, at least to the same extent. That's my personal opinion and Dora's on the line. She might be pulling her hair out or cursing me under her breath. But we'll see what happens when that, when we talk about that. So with that, I think we've got good direction for staff. I think we're got a hold of what we want to do. I think we want to simplify it. I think I heard the assembly say, more than one member on the assembly saying, let's not drag this out and let's not make this a big deal. It really is a small part of our budget. It's important to the nonprofits, but it's not something that we have to agonize over. And I think, I think you guys got a direction you can go and put it together and bring it back. And the assembly can go, yeah, and then when we get to the budget, we can, we can go forward from there. So with that said, we will close that discussion unless anybody else has a last words. Okay. The next thing to discuss is meeting in person attendance versus Zoom attendance. Numbers were going down. We actually had 26 here a week ago, then it jumped back to 63. We're going to have to learn to live with COVID at some point. I think the fact that the vaccinations, we have a good vaccination count in this community has kept us from overwhelming the hospital, which is the reason we went into the pandemic mode was to not overwhelm our health services. But I need to know how the assembly members feel about meeting in person. If you personally think that it's too risky or if you think it's okay, we do the social distance, that's why we have the fire hall. We could even limit public for the first couple of meetings until we see how the counts continue to go. When we get into the budget, we don't want to limit the public because the problem with limiting the public is if you say, well, we'll let, we've got enough room to have 15 people in the audience at the fire hall. The 16th person shows up, he's locked out, that's, that's gets a little tough. So let's have a discussion on what we think. And I think I'm just going to go around the board as I see it in front of me and get your opinions. And Joseph, I'm going to ask you, how do you feel about meeting back in person starting next week?
I think that meeting in person is a lot better than the Zoom. I've been doing this now for over two years or whatever it is, and it's really tough, especially with the stuff that is coming up. I think it's important that we can see each other's eyeballs. It makes a lot of difference when you can see somebody when they're talking, I mean, in person. We can see each other on the screen, but it isn't the same. I think that the only problem that I have is that with the few people that are, don't like to be masked or they don't want the vaccination. But I think that is proving to be true throughout the country that they are becoming the minority now. And so I'm feeling more comfortable. I'm not completely comfortable, but I think it's better for us all that we start to, like you said, get used to it and start meeting in person. And hopefully more people will get, the rest of people will get their vaccinations.
Okay, Smiley Dude, Scott Smiley, do you know your moniker is Smiley Dude on the screen, Scott? I can't hear you. There you go.
Yes, I know that my moniker is Smiley Dude. This is my third computer. They die with their frequency with me. As a loss for how to name it. I think we should start with in person next time. The numbers have been going down pretty considerably. If you compare Monday, February 7th with 39 cases to the month before, it was 102. So they're really coming down pretty hard. And it's also a challenge to pick numbers from Monday because it's closed on Sunday and it's reduced on Saturday as well in terms of number of tests. So I think they're coming down. It's no fun to do Zoom and I understand everybody's frustration with all of this. But I think we were socially distant in the fire station and we can continue with that way. Works for me.
Okay, Jeff.
Yeah, I, you know, I watch the numbers pretty regularly and I saw them coming down. And then I saw the the report yesterday, I think it was where we popped back up to 67 and that, and then I listened to the radio this morning where they say we dropped and now we've got another increase occurring. And, you know, I'm not opposed to the idea of meeting back in person with the assembly. I'm hesitant to open the doors to the public as soon as we're back on day one, not to limit the public input, but to limit the number of us in that room. I'd rather have people available in person when we are starting the budget process more so than when we're just coming back for our first meeting. So I'm hesitant to say, let's open the doors to the fire hall and see 40 folks come on in with us on our first meeting out of the gate. Because I'd rather be doing budget in person and I'd rather be cautious to begin with. So I'm willing to go back and meet in person. I'm comfortable with that. I'll continue to wear a mask and I'll continue to keep my my distance from others as I see fit. But I'd like us to consider keeping, you know, public, you know, telephonically or virtual for at least the first meeting back to see where the numbers stay.
Okay, Jared.
Yep, I'm all for going back in person and opening up. And I might be in the minority, but I think we could even go back to the chambers. The social distancing is not as big of a preventer of spread as we originally thought. So social distancing doesn't really do anything. And 95 masks are where it's at. So I'm fine with opening it up, limiting still, you know, number of people in the room. But if we are there and we are masked, there's no reason why we can't be meeting in the chamber. So whatever change we make to go in person, I am fully in favor of it.
Okay, James.
Yeah, I'm open to in-person meetings. Whatever, whatever else we decide. Whatever, whatever else we decide. Um, you know that I'm not a big mask wearer once we get into the, into our chairs. But uh, once, once we uh, get in and sit down, that's not something that's necessary. But uh, as far as public, I, I don't see why we wouldn't invite the public in.
Okay, Scott, Art.
Yes, I'm very much in favor of meeting in person again. Um, effective to next Thursday, February 17. And I'm in favor of the public being allowed. Most all meetings, we do not have an issue with much public that shows up. Um, I want to see us meet at Bayside. And I like the idea in each of us having our own table. So you have separation, nobody's sharing the table. And uh, um, we'll get back together in person. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to sum it up here. It seems everybody's willing to go back in person. Um, I think we do need to do it for a number of reasons at the fire hall. Um, there's more room there if, if, if we do get some public in, at least they can kind of social distance a little bit, whether it helps or not, it doesn't matter at this point. Sometimes it's just a mental thing. Um, also, it's pretty short notice to give IT to move everything over to our spaces back at the Borough Building. So we'll get together next week. Um, Nina, if you will make sure that gets out, you know, onto the airwaves that the, the meeting will be at the fire hall. And hopefully we won't have a night like tonight where we're supposedly going to get five inches of snow. Uh, I will say we will continue with the um, ability even at a regular meeting to Zoom in for COVID related reasons. If you are a close contact or you have tested positive, but you still want to attend the meeting, you can do that uh, through Zoom or telephonically. Um, until we get a better handle on how everything's going out there, then we'll go back to in-person only. If uh, so I appreciate all of your input and uh, I'm looking forward to seeing you next week at the regular meeting. I think it's going to be a short meeting, but it'll be fun to be back in person. Okay, moving on. We uh, opened up the uh, discussion on the Borough Personnel Rules and Regulations. And there were a number of questions. I think Scott had quite a number of questions that really needed to have good answers. And one of the biggest part of the questions were why, why were some of the changes made? And I've been told that some of them were made because they are reflecting our contract with the union. And there were other changes that were not in the contract with the union that were made. And so we need to discuss those. And I'm going to turn it over to Roxanne or to whoever she wants, Megan. Uh, to go ahead and let's discuss where we're at.
I just hope the assembly had a chance to review some of the staff recommendations. And you know, we just put some good thought toward that. We tried to capture all of the feedback that we got from the last session about this topic. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. And Megan, if you have anything you'd like to add, feel free.
Thank you. Um, I don't have anything to add. Um, I hope that you all were able to read through the responses that we did provide and let us know if you have additional questions.
Okay, I'll open it up to assembly member comments. And uh, Scott, Art, you were the one that had the, the most things to say last time. You want to go ahead and uh, jump in on this?
Yeah, I have not received any of the comments by staff. Yes. Um, so I have um, I have all the comments that I had written down on, on the draft two weeks ago. I'm willing to go over with it.
How about if you uh, just briefly state each one of them and then we'll ask Megan or Roxanne to tell you what they did with your comment, if they addressed it. Oh, Megan, wait, wait a minute, hold on Scott. Megan, uh, what, what were you going to say?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't mind reading off the, the question that he had and then the response that we provided, if that would make things a little cleaner.
Okay, why don't you do that? Then Scott, if you, if you have something else that you want to know, you just chime in, okay? Since I can't see you raising your hand, just say excuse me or something and I'll let you speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Megan, go ahead.
Okay, um, Scott, we arranged them in the order that they appeared in the personnel manual, not necessarily the order that they came, the questions came up amongst the assembly members. So the first item um, was section 202.1 Borough Assembly, page 2-1. You request that items A and B referring to a personnel board be removed. We responded um, that we recommend allowing the items to remain in case a personnel board is created in the future.
Which, which line is that, Megan? I'm on that page, 2-1.
It was 202.1 Borough Assembly, appoint and dismiss members of the, of a personnel board.
A and B.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, Megan, back to you.
Okay, the next one, um, section 202.3 Department Directors, page 2-2. Mr. Art requests adding an item requiring that department directors provide performance evaluations for all employees annually. The response is staff refers to section 415 evaluations on page 4-6, which states that all staff shall be evaluated at least once per year, a minimum of 30 days prior to their anniversary date, and proposes that Mr. Art's change is not necessary.
Which page is that on, Megan?
Page 2-2. And we refer you to page.
I understand that, but.
We, we refer you to page 4-6.
Thank you.
And of course, Roxanne, I will need that the manager's going to have to make sure you don't have um, department heads, like some I know used to work there who uh, got a little lazy on it. So uh, because it is important and we found out how important it was when we already had one law case.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, Bill?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not in favor of just leaving it as is. I want to see it stated very boldly under department heads or department directors section. There's nothing wrong with putting it in both on there. And I'd like to see that.
Okay, do we have anybody else on the assembly that has a preference one way or the other? Seeing none, I, I don't see any reason it can't be in both places unless Megan or Roxanne has a specific reason that we can't just uh, double emphasize that. Okay, Megan, we're back to you.
Thank you. Uh, the next section is 202.5 All Employees, page 2-3. Mr. Art requests removal of a reference to the personnel board in item E. Staff recommends changing the reference to read uh, reference to a personnel board rather than the reference or than the personnel board for the same reason as the first one, in case we reinstate a personnel board.
Okay. Scott, any comments?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next one. Um, section 204.1 Organization of an Advisory Council, page 2-4. And election of advisory council, page 2-5. Mr. Art requests that the advisory council shall consist of three elected staff members rather than five and additional references be changed to match. Mayor Roberts concurs. Staff does not disagree.
Okay. Next one, please.
Section 401 Designation of Employees, Temporary Employee, page 4-1. Mr. Art requests that hours worked per week be changed from 20 to 24. Um, our response is that this language was agreed upon in union negotiations in late 2019. Staff recommends allowing the language to read 20 hours and be renegotiated at a later date if desired. And currently there are no long-term temporary employees on staff.
So that came right from the uh, the agreement with the IBEW. Okay, Scott, any questions on that?
I agree with what Megan's saying and putting the option in there.
Okay, Megan, go forward.
Okay, thank you. Section 409 Entrance Wage Rate, page 4-3. Mr. Art does not agree with changing assembly approval for placement above step C to step F, although he would consider changing from step C to step D. Mayor Roberts agrees that this should be discussed by the assembly. Staff response is that we welcome an assembly discussion on this matter.
Okay, my agreement is that I'll start with me, Scott, and then we'll go to you. I'm sorry. We'll go to you first, Scott. That would be correct way to do this.
I don't mind. Go ahead, Bill.
I was just going to say, um, we have a depart, uh, a manager that we hired that we trust. And we have to trust that if they're going to offer somebody a pay scale, it's because that person A is worth it and B, because it is a competitive market out there, something I just discussed with Roxanne not too long ago. Um, we often don't have a window where we can go two or three weeks to get assembly approval. We have to be able to say, you know, we can get you that. Um, now maybe F is too high, I don't know. But I think we got to give some leeway to our manager. That's why we hire them. That's what we expect of them. And they're the ones that know what the uh, employment field is for whatever job they're looking for. Um, I think some jobs, I, well, of course CFO, uh, the assembly has to approve anyway. But some positions are very competitive. Some positions right now in IT are very competitive. And uh, we are short in IT staff. If we get somebody and, and we have to wait three weeks or so for them to know that they're going to get the salary they want, I think we might lose them. So I do think we have to raise it from C. And I'm open to anybody else on the assembly. And then we get back to Scott because uh, he, he said a D, I think. So if, let's have some input from the rest of the assembly and then we'll go back to Scott. Anybody have any preference on this? Jeff.
Yeah, I, what you just said, I would agree with, Mr. Mayor, is that it's a competitive market. And if we're sitting waiting three weeks for us to come back together to give that authorization, um, folks, when they're looking for work are looking for work and they're looking in multiple areas. Um, usually not just narrowing their search down to one location. And um, and you know, I, I agree with what you said. We hire a manager to manage and we trust that they're making the decisions that are in the best interest of the borough and, and you know, being a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. Um, I'm comfortable leaving it where staff has put it. And uh, and knowing that the manager's got that discretion to, to be able to make those decisions, to hire the appropriate personnel to, to carry out the, the business of the borough.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Scott Smiley.
My son recently graduated with a computer science degree. And he's starting salary was above 80,000. And I, you just need to pay more money to these people. If you look at hiring across the country, it's tough for everybody. You need the maximum amount of discretion. Now, a few years ago, we had a retirement system that really was a benefit to hiring people because it gave them the surety of their employment and, and, and a good set of benefits. We don't have that anymore. So I think you need to be able to entice them with higher salaries. I'm in favor of the way you said it with the manager having the discretion.
Okay, Joseph.
I, I agree with both the assembly members before me. I think that the reason that we hire um, the managers because we trust in her to do the best thing for us. And um, I'd like to.
Joseph, you just froze up. Anybody else wish to speak until we get Joseph back? Scott, Art, why don't you uh, hop in here real quick?
Okay, um, we just spent almost five years with a manager that I sure didn't trust. And I agree that we need to try and, and um, and have a manager that we can trust. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I'm in favor of the D right now, but I'm not opposed to having discussions on specific job descriptions to give the, the manager some additional leeway, but not carte blanche approval on any position. That's part of the problem here. But uh, that's, that's my feeling on it. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to let Joseph finish what he was saying when he froze up there and then we'll go to James. Joseph, we kind of lost you there.
Yeah, my internet is bad here. Um, but I was just going to say that I don't think that we have to micromanage. I think we hired the manager to do a job and I confident that our um, trust in her is going to be um, is well placed. And so that's my thought.
Okay, James.
Well, I have two different statements, I guess. Uh, one, I think that D is fine for right now, but I also think that if it's a pertinent hire that the, that the assembly should be able to come together for a discussion with the manager if she wants to make it a higher range. It, it doesn't have to be more than four. So it's pretty simple to get four people to uh, agree or disagree about it um, in a, in a, in a quick session. The other, you know, in a special session, I should say. The other part of that is I, I still think that we need to have an evaluation of our wages. I thi, I think that we are on the bottom end of the scale. Uh, you know, it used to be, as was mentioned before, that, that working for um, a city or a borough or a state entity was, was the way to go because of your retirement benefits, but we don't have that anymore. Um, those benefits have gone away and we need to start looking at as a normal business, what those wages are for those particular um, positions. And, and whether it's the C, D, E, F scale, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily work anymore. It, we, we have to start looking at um, a different way of going about this. And that, and that's where I'm at, is we need to look at a different way of going about this. And maybe D isn't large enough, but I think that uh, for right now, that's where we need to be.
Okay, here's, here's what I'm thinking uh, on this particular one item on this. Um, we leave it as an F, Scott Art, or James can make a motion to change that to a D when we vote on it. And if it passes with four votes, uh, then we will lower to a D. However, the other thing I'm thinking with James is 100% right. We need to have another salary study. I see the city just did one. Uh, we could have done one in conjunction with the city if they knew they were doing one. But um, I, I, I don't think anybody in the assembly knew that. Um, so I think Roxanne, maybe we should put out an RFP for a salary study. Because it's been quite a while since we did one and see, see where we stand. Uh, because we are having a hard time hiring people. And we are trying to get uh, more people to, to come to the borough. We're trying to uh, make it a better place to work. And I think a good salary study is necessary. So Roxanne, I want you to get together an RFP and the assembly can approve it or disapprove it um, uh, in a future, future vote.
Phil, this is Scott.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Um, that's something we do as part of the budget process, Phil. It's not in this current year's budget. That'll be part of the budget process to allocate the money to do that and get an idea of what it's going to cost, not just turn around and all of them right.
No, I agree with you, Scott. We need to have the money to do it, but we need to have Roxanne working in that direction because our budget's going to be coming up here in the next month. working in that direction because our budget's gonna be coming up here in the next month or so. We're gonna start really getting into it. But you're a hundred percent right. We have to have the money to pay for it because it's spending. Roxanne, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, we just also have had a request from our finance director to do a salary study, so you're not on your own. I was just reluctant to bring that forward as my first initiative, so I really appreciate the input from the assembly to coincide with what our finance director hopes to do. And I'll be happy to bring forward an RFP for that.
Yeah, you do that and we'll, we'll look at it and fine tune it. And as Scott says, we'll put it in the budget. Yeah, well, we, we don't know how much it's gonna cost, so we're gonna have to get some idea. We might have to put it out and find out if it's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars, we may not want to put it in the budget. But I think they're usually somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand. Something like that one. For some reason, that sticks in my mind. Jeff?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm sure the city, if somebody wanted to walk down the hall and ask, might be willing to share what they just spent for that salary study and that might give us an idea as well.
Good point. Good point. Roxanne, you're nominated.
Happy to do so.
All right, Megan, we're back to you. We, we decided we're gonna let Scott or James or anybody make an amendment to that. And if we get four votes, because we can't vote on it tonight, I see it going either way, so we will do that, that way. Go to the next one, please.
Thank you. The next one is section four one five evaluation, page four dash six. Ms. Williams is concerned that the new language, if any employee's evaluation is not timely prepared, the employee's performance shall be considered satisfactory. Because it seems to accept the annual, excuse me, it seems to accept that annual employee evaluations are not required and may subject the borough to liability for not properly documenting employee performance. Response, this language change was brought forward by union employees for the two thousand thirteen negotiated changes to the collective bargaining agreement. Because many evaluations were not performed in a timely manner or were not performed at all, which resulted in a delay of the employee receiving their annual pay increase that is dependent upon a satisfactory performance evaluation. Staff recommends that the change to the personnel manual be approved to match the collective bargaining agreement and bring the request to remove the language to the two thousand twenty-three negotiations when a track record of timely performance evaluations can be documented by manager Murphy.
Okay, Scott, you want to comment on that?
I agree.
Okay. Moving forward.
Section five oh four dismissal notice in severance pay, page five dash four. Mr. Arnt does not agree with the changes to severance pay because the assembly has not discussed it. Response, this change was bargained in the two thousand sixteen union negotiations to appropriately compensate long term employees who may be subjected to budget cuts or other dismissal without prejudice. Staff recommends maintaining this language.
So this was negotiated, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, Scott?
I think it needs to be stated when, as a side note on here, that when this was negotiated as part of the contract, I don't have a problem, but being, you know, it just kind of hit me sideways on there with no explanation.
Megan, could you put as, as negotiated in two thousand sixteen contract? And when we do the new contract, if we don't like it, we can try and negotiate something else.
Okay.
And were there any more? Was that the last one?
There's one more. Section seven one two bereavement leave, page seven dash seven. Mr. Griffin questions the use of the terminology same sex domestic partner and suggests a change to read simply domestic partner. Ms. Williams and agree, isn't, sorry, I'm tongue tied. Ms. Williams agrees with the proposal to change the language to read domestic partner. Response, this language has been included in the collective bargaining agreement since two thousand nine. It was added in order to be consistent with State of Alaska law as it pertains to same sex domestic partners. The referenced form with State of Alaska Division of Personnel and Labor Relations remains titled Same Sex Partner Affidavit. Therefore, staff recommends accepting this language for the current update to the personnel manual to match the collective bargaining agreement and flag it for review and discussion in the next union negotiation.
Yeah, I, I don't like it either. I, I think it should be just a domestic partner. But if it's state law, I don't know that we should mess with it. Anybody have any comments on that? Jared and then Scott Smiley.
Yeah, I'm just curious about what State of Alaska law requires same sex domestic partners to file an affidavit in order to receive bereavement, a bereavement benefit and does not require a heterosexual domestic partner to do the same thing. That seems really weird and unconstitutional to me. But if that's the language in the CBA, then I guess we're bound by the language in the CBA. So that it's just, oh God, it just feels weird. So yes, thank you very much for flagging it for review for next year's negotiations.
I got, I gotta think that in two thousand nine same sex partners couldn't officially be married. And I think that's part of the problem. The state is notorious for not updating their administrative code and other things. We, we run into it all the time in assessing where we're up against an administrative code that's not in compliance with state statutes. Scott Smiley?
I think we should ask our lawyer about this one. See how to clean it up.
Good idea. Can we do that, please?
I'll be happy to take care of that.
And that is the last one, right?
Yes.
Bill, this is Scott.
Yep, go ahead, Scott.
No, it's not all of them. I've got a couple of more that I need some explanation on.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, first is on page seven dash five. Return to work. It says, the borough at its discretion may require certificate from the attending physician that the employee who has taken family medical leave is able to return to work. Who at the borough? Does the borough?
I suppose we should put in the borough manager since we don't have a HR at this point.
That's my thinking also.
Okay, anybody disagree with that? Okay, I'm getting thumbs up. Jeff, you got a question?
Yeah, where, where was that line at, Mr. Arnt?
Seven point five.
It's seven, seven dash five, page seven dash five, you've got after certification halfway down, and it says return to work and it's in the blue, it's changed. Entire sentence.
Thank you. I was on the wrong page.
Okay, Megan, we got that. Let's put the manager, put her on the spot again.
Okay.
Okay, Scott, go ahead. You got more?
Okay, Bill, on page seven dash seven, it talks about the employee's birthday day off and it can happen anytime, three months either way. So a six, over a six month period they can take it. I don't know if that's maybe something that's in the contract at that, but it seemed pretty liberal for a six month period for your birthday, kind of like a yearly holiday, I guess.
Was that in the contract, Megan? Do you know?
Yes, it was negotiated in the contract and they, we have some employees whose birthday falls during a time that's not convenient for the borough to allow them to have time off. For instance, I believe our finance director has a birthday right around the time that the budget is being approved. Not mistaken. But though it's to allow for those sort of situations so that we have some clauses in our employment agreements where certain staff can be asked not to take time off during certain periods of time. The clerk's office has trouble allowing staff to take time off during the elections period. Finance has certain deadlines during the audit and the budget. So it's to accommodate those staff members.
Hey, Scott, is that good for you?
Yes, thank you. Then the next one is on page nine point nine dash one. Under tuition refunds, it's the second paragraph, it deals with increasing reimbursement tuition exceeds, moving it from three hundred to five hundred. And then further on, maximum reimbursement tuition amount is being raised from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. Just would like to see us understand where that's coming from. I realize things have increased, but I'd just like to hear the discussion behind it.
Those were negotiated with the union.
Okay. And see. Normally we're talking. Then I have on page eleven dash two moving expenses. There's a, a change on there that maybe I just have that. Right now, it says, okay, when there is an essential, it's gonna change. Borough manager may specify, the current one is borough manager may specify position in high demand and short supply, requiring moving expenses for the purpose of accepting employment with the borough upon approval of the assembly. That's the currently what it is. When there is an essential position to be filled and the best applicant is from outside Kodiak, the borough manager may authorize the reimbursement of moving expenses. So we're changing it from the assembly to the manager. And I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Well, let me, let me put this with the step D and step F. You can propose a change if you want to delete the change and go back to assembly approval. And if we get four votes. Does that sound good?
Yeah, my only, my only problem with both of those, Bill, is we're automatically changing it and then it goes back. Right now, we're dealing, normally you would have a motion to change it from the existing language, not to go back to on both.
The reason I say do it that way because we can't really take a vote tonight. We can get a feel for how it should go. But that's the way it is right now. And I think that would be the cleanest way to handle it. I see Megan's got maybe an explanation. So go ahead, Megan.
Oh, I just want to offer an apology. That was an oversight on my part. I would not have any difficulty adding at the end of that blue sentences upon approval of the assembly. I think the intent is to keep it the same, just to word it a little more cleanly.
Okay, then let's do it. Then we don't have to make a, a motion to amend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay.
Just going through these pages individually here, I think that's the the bulk of my comments at this time tonight.
Okay, anybody else have any comments outside of those?
Bill, one other thing that would be nice is in the beginning of of this, it talks about. Let me get the exact language there. It talks about some of these would be needing to be negotiated, but yet it wasn't clear. That was in the staff report, go there. At the very bottom of the staff report on it said staff has, have identified additional proposed amendments to the personnel rules and regulations. However, some proposed changes will need to be approved by the union. I'd like to see a, a list of what would need to be approved by the union so that we know that upfront.
Those would be future changes to the personnel manual, right, Megan?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know that they're pertinent to passing the changes that are before us. But if, if you're interested in what future changes might be coming, we could ask staff to disperse a list if it's okay, if there's no if there's no reason that prejudice, if that's no reason to prejudice our negotiations. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I was just looking, I was thinking that it related to the statement related to proposed changes in the personnel rules and regulations.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the future ones. It's the future ones. We could even take that out, I believe. That's actually a staff report. It's not, it's not in the, the, the document itself, so we could just leave that. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Nobody else, moving on, going once, going twice. That brings us to ordinance, which is actually under packet review, but we're gonna discuss it a little bit on the revenue and finance, limiting the restrictions of the property tax cap to the general fund only. I think we've had discussions on this before, but Roxanne, if you want to fill us in on that or if you want to drop it on Dora Cross's lap, go ahead.
I'll just hand this over to Dora.
All right, you're up.
Thank you. This evening, we've mentioned this a couple of times in other work sessions. This ordinance would remove the debt service component of the formula from the limitation. The State of Alaska already does not allow limitations on tax revenue collections for bonded debt payments. And the formula that we currently have is modeled from a community who blended their debt service and their general fund together. And we don't do that here. We have a separate debt service fund. Although we do have a coded minimum to keep in that fund, we don't keep more than that minimum because it messes with the arbitrage calculations and the covenants related to that. So all this does is help streamline the formula and remove something that you put in and then take out and was modeled in a community that doesn't account for it the same way ours does. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Questions? Seems like we're just cleaning this up a little bit. You know, I thought that the assembly already considered a change to this where the tax gap only applied to real property tax, didn't, didn't apply to sales, not sales tax, to cigarette tax and the rest of the other taxes out there. Is that?
Correct. The second amendment to this formula was done in two thousand twenty-one and that was to remove the, like you indicated, the excise tax, the things that weren't property tax related. And it also removed the non-area wide taxes for like the service areas to get at the, just the area wide taxes what this is associated with.
All right, any, any discussion? I think it's pretty straightforward. So there is no discussion, so we could have left it on packet review, I guess. And then we brings us to the budget calendar. And again, Roxanne, you want to drop this on Dora or do you want to handle it? Since you have the first part of the budget calendar.
Well, just an introductory remark is that we hope we could get a little clarity on the schedule that you'd like to have. For example, does the assemble, assembly wish to have work sessions where we handle a lot of these things, where we attach the discussions to other work session items? Do we want to spend Saturdays doing, or Sundays doing some of this stuff? But I'll hand it over to Dora so she can clarify even more.
I don't have anything else to add. I think that was good. It's just helpful for staff for planning for our workloads. If, if we know ahead of time what the expectation is for us on timelines.
Okay, I see that proposed date, April, April first is the manager's budget. Is that the newest date we have? Okay, I see that proposed date, April, April first is the manager's budget. Is that the newest date we have? I would like, uh, I like talking about the budgets of enterprise funds in that in March, so that when we get into the real use of tax dollars, which are not the enterprise funds, uh, we don't have those hanging out there. Um, I think service district boards also by the end of March, we have them get their budgets to us. And last year, uh, we didn't even discuss them, and that was, I will take the, uh, the hit for that. I think it was Scott that reminded me after it was all over. So we will, we will get those in there. Typically, we don't have a whole lot of trouble with, uh, with service area budgets because, um, they don't change much, uh, unless they're doing some major improvements. And the assembly feels that they're going to have to raise too much taxes to do so. Uh, I haven't seen that happen for quite some time. So anybody want to look at this? Anybody want to make any comments on how we should handle this? I, I would, I would like to handle budget discussions as much as possible at work sessions. If it needs a Saturday work session, fine, but I prefer not to do that because then we're paying staff. If there's any staff that has to show up that is not exempt or is hourly waged. Um, of course, the same could be said in evenings if we asked them to be there in the evening. So that's kind of a hollow argument. So let's have a little discussion. Anybody want to change anything? Anybody want to elucidate? Lucidation? My God, I can't speak tonight. Any illumination on what's going on here? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, do you want to limit this discussion to the proposed calendar or general comments regarding, um, budget process this year?
Um, to the calendar and also the general, general way we're going to handle it. Uh, um, I'll tell you my thoughts is we, we look at the manager's budget and then have the department heads explain their budget to, as proposed in the manager's budget to the assembly, and we discuss those. Um, our job isn't really to tell the manager where to spend the money. Our job is to tell the manager, this is what you have to spend. Uh, I know in the past assemblies have wanted to be so bold as to tell the manager what they will not fund and what they will fund. I think that's why we hire a manager. And I think we got one now that's quite capable of making, uh, decisions based on what is needed. But if you want to talk about it, we can talk about it a little bit. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just, just one comment, having gone through a budget process last year. Um, and, uh, and many times walking away at the end of an evening feeling somewhat frustrated. I'd, I'd like to look at a process that allows us to be able to actually track what's happening. When we spread an eighth of an employee out across various departments, it's hard to get a sense of exactly where, what's what. And, uh, and, and that was beyond frustrating for me to try to figure that piece out, looking at it. So I don't know if that's a software piece, and maybe it's too late to consider that for this year, and I'm fine with that answer if it is. Um, I just think there's a cleaner way to present a budget that, um, is, is as transparent as possible, um, for the public. And I, I feel like if I was struggling with that for transparency sake last year a little bit, um, I don't think I'm alone. Uh, I feel like I'm, um, uh, have been involved in budget processes for a number of years. But, uh, I feel like it, it certainly could have been a little more transparent in some regards with how positions were allocated throughout the budget. Um, that's all I had. I, I'm fine with dates, however, uh, people want to do it. If we want to do it at work sessions or Saturdays, I'm open to either of those.
James, before we go to you, Dora, do you have, uh, anything you want to add to comments by Jeff, any answers?
Um, I do. The, everyone is pretty much assigned, everyone is assigned a home department. Everyone pretty much works in their home department. The only staff that doesn't work in the home department would be some of the EF staff because they work at, um, KFRC or at the landfill or, um, maintenance for other buildings and grounds that we have in the buildings and grounds funds. So, um, Dave is the one, Dave and I worked together on allocating his staff. Everyone else is pretty much in their own department. And if it's a general fund, um, department, we don't allocate them like we do for those in the enterprise and special revenue funds that, that Dave's staff is involved with. The second thing I'll note, a little off topic from that is you have two budget calendars in your packet. The first one is blank for this year. The second one in there is the actual dates from last year. So I just wanted to make sure that, that, um, that that was clear. I will certainly talk to Jeff on the side if you wish and, uh, or anyone else. I don't, I don't care how that works to, um, get some understanding or some clarity on that. That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Dora. I think what Jeff is saying is we need to know how much money is being spent of general funds for this position, and then how much is being spent by enterprise funds. And that's really the biggest problem with that. Or, uh, parks, not parks, but the, uh, money that goes into, uh, buildings and grounds. Is that correct, Jeff? You just want to see where, where that's all allocated.
Yeah, I'd like to have a clear picture of it, but Dora, I, I'm going to take you up on your offer and I'll, uh, schedule a time to come in and sit with you. That would be, uh, fantastic. So thank you.
Please do. I would welcome it.
Okay, James.
Uh, so since we're talking about the budget process, um, I will not be here for, uh, part of the March discussion, which is the enterprise funds and the continuation of the previous meeting. Um, I will be in Europe for two weeks and will not be available.
You gonna go to the Eiffel Tower?
No, Eastern Bloc. I'll be in the Ukraine.
Oh. Oh. Okay, um, we have, we have the budget, uh, dates from last year. And, um, I would suggest that maybe we, I will try to find the closest dates on our meetings from this, for this year and put them in there and we'll send them out to the assembly. And then the assembly can comment. I, I think that that breakdown worked or should work for us. I think, uh, I just got to be a little more organized in how we go about the budget. And if we take it in small bites and, and chew the bites up and spit them out and build them into what we want, then when we get down to the end, it won't be the big scramble. And again, sometimes the big scramble is because we get a curve ball that we can't quite handle. Like they canceled all funds for the bond reimbursement or whatever. So, uh, if everybody's okay with that, that's what I will do with the, the budget thing here. Unless anybody has any real problem with the way it's laid out, uh, we'll go forward with that. Seeing none. I thought that would. Okay, discussion on the status of the consolidation committee. This was something I thought that we should talk about. Uh, it was a vote of the people. We set it up. The resolution set it up. It set it up with, um, members of the city on the consolidation committee. The city is not really interested. And, um, I guess I have a question for both James and Jared. If we go forward with trying to consolidate and the city says they're not going to sign any paperwork, does that mean consolidation is dead? James?
It, it's not necessarily dead, but it doesn't really help the, the approval process with the, uh, boundaries commission. But if anybody listened to Tuesday's work session for the city, um, their annexation, uh, person that did the study said that it would be better for the city to consolidate with the borough than to annex either of the two sections that, that they had, uh, proposed. So I think that they may be coming back to the table on this after that discussion on Tuesday. So we'll, we'll see what they have to say. They're, they're meeting today as well as we are. So, um, hard to say what, what's going to happen, but, uh, to, to answer your question, it, it, we don't have to have it, but it does help in the decision-making process for the boundary commission.
Okay, we, I have an application for the consolidation committee, one application. I don't know how many seats are vacant. But if the city does not want to participate in the committee, I would, uh, say we're going to go forward, that I would rely heavily on both Jared and James to give me, uh, an alternative way to get, to write another resolution to set up the committee the way that it would work. I think that we have a duty, since it said to take a look at, to have a duty to go back to the people and say, it really doesn't look good, or it's not going to probably not going to work. But like James says, we should probably wait to see what happens at the city meeting. If their expert is saying they should probably look at consolidation. Uh, maybe that, maybe we can start anew and start with some, uh, more vigor than it's ground down to almost a halt. I think we need to put, put forth a, a report of some kind. Uh, do we have enough people on the committee? We can have a quorum at this point.
We do. We just haven't had enough people available for the last two weeks to, to get a quorum. Uh, we don't have anything scheduled for next week, but, uh, we should be having a meeting on the week of the, if I can, twenty-first. So, um, hopefully we'll have, uh, enough people there to make a quorum.
Okay, Lena, we have that one, uh, applicant for the consolidation committee. Can you also add that to, uh, next week's other items approval by the assembly for the, for that member? And we'll, better chance of getting a quorum if we add at least one more member onto a vacancy. Uh, Mr. Smiley, you had your hand up.
Yeah, when the, uh, person from the boundary commission came down and gave a speech to us several years ago about the consolidation, they, they said you needed to have the city in on it too. Not only them, but also the six villages had to buy into it as well. So I'm kind of flummoxed by what Mr. Turner said, that we don't need them. I think the boundary commission didn't give that impression to me, that's for sure.
Well, you might be able to override that by a, a vote of the people. I don't know. We should check on that.
That's correct. It's, it's the vote of the, it's the vote that counts. So, so whenever we, uh, decide to move it forward to the boundary commission, then it's the vote of the people that moves it to the boundary commission. And whatever that vote is, is what they're going to go off of. It's, like I said, it's better to have the city participation and sign off on it so that the vote, you know, if the vote does go, then the boundary commission doesn't even question it. But, um, if, if you don't have both parties involved through the whole process, it makes it tougher to, to come up with a better plan for everybody.
Well, let's, uh, let's, I'll make that appointment next week. Uh, we'll wait to hear from the city if they're interested after talking to their expert on the annexation. Uh, and we'll go forward from there. We may need to make the decision just to go forward and realize it's not ever going to happen. And we ought to put out a short letter, a letter of anything, of, and nothing else, if not even a report, and, uh, and, and put an end to it or follow it to the end. Uh, let's see what the next two weeks brings. Okay, so that answers my question on that. And then the last thing to discuss, um, I just wanted to bring it up. It's, it's going to be, since we're meeting in person next week, it will be on the, uh, regular agenda is the land statement, the four, four different versions. Um, I think that we need to kind of decide which way we're going to go. We might have a hard time getting a consensus. I'll put it this way. I'd, I'd like to know going into the regular meeting that we have a consensus on which way to go on, uh, on the, the actual statement that we're going to read. And, uh, I'd like to get an input from the assembly. I think it should be fairly short. Uh, I read the, uh, a lot of the information that we got, uh, sent to us on emails. And, uh, Joseph, did we lose him? I think we did. Uh, Joseph's, um, is very eloquent. It's, uh, definitely speaks the mind of the natives. However, I think that we make the realization that we as a assembly are making the statement. And we just want to make the statement and make it as real as possible and also something that's as readable as possible. So what are your feelings? We have four separate, uh, drafts. Do you want to just go and, uh, do amendment one, two, three, four until we hit one where we get four votes? Or do you want to discuss it tonight? Any input from anybody? Mr. Smiley?
I'll go along with Turner's.
Okay. Anybody else?
Bill, this is Scott.
Yeah.
Um, I'm also in favor of Turner's.
Okay. So, uh, madam, go, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I would just indicate that I also, uh, would support assembly member Turner's, uh, version.
Okay, and assuming James would support it. So we have, I know we have, uh, enough votes to do that. Uh, I'm going to ask Lena though, what is on the table? Do we have version one, two, three, four, or? Do you know?
Um, Bill, I don't have the attachments for the agenda in front of me. Um, so I will have to get back to you and let you know which one is on the table.
Okay.
I can't.
Whatever one it is, whatever one it is, we can take, uh, uh, amendment to revise it and, uh, and take a vote. Okay, well, that made that easy. So that takes us to managers' comments. Roxanne, you're on.
Well, just a quick question. Since we've decided to go back to in-person meetings for the assembly, I have a question from staff. Can we bring the boards and commissions back to in-person then?
Um, that decision was actually, that decision was actually asked of me when we, we did all this. And we went to, no, let's put them all on Zoom because if we're not going to meet in person, we shouldn't be exposing. Let's let it be a, uh, individual board. No, let's not do that. Let's say they can.
No, it needs to be public, Bill, Scott.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, let's, let's, Scott, let's just, um, let's just say that we are all going back to in-person meetings, all the boards and commissions.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarity. That'll help, especially with the planning and zoning commission meeting that's happening next week.
Yeah, also remember that if there's a COVID-related reason, somebody can call in. If they're exposed, they're, you know, in quarantine or they've tested positive, they can still, they can still call in, at least for now, until things change drastically.
Okay, great.
Okay, you're still on, Roxanne.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm really excited to announce some actually good news. Uh, Kodiak Island Borough has been awarded funds appropriated from the state's American Rescue Plan Act. COVID state and local fiscal recovery funds toward grants to local governments with significant revenue losses due to COVID-19. And the amount that we were awarded in this allotment is one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine, and let's not forget the one cent. So I really want to thank the finance team and also Megan for the work that they did. And we'll be happy to have some future sessions with the assembly to figure out how we're going to deal with so much of the funding that we're getting, that we'll be getting from ARPA, and then also funding that we'll be getting from infrastructure potential dollars and partnerships that we'll need to have. Is there any questions about that? Because that was a pretty big announcement.
Yeah, is there a lot of, um, restrictions on how we can spend that money or is it free money?
I, I'm sure it's got its whole bucket of restrictions, but Megan can help me understand if there's any clarification she has, or Dave, if he has any understanding.
Yeah, I think Dave started this whole thing, so. Yeah, I think Dave started this whole thing, so he might have a lot of understanding on that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to announce that I got some information and this is just a preliminary report from the school superintendent. He wanted to let me know that the their preliminary budget reflects local funding request of us for eleven million nine hundred and fifty five thousand two hundred and forty four. So I just wanted to make you aware that I received that and I'll be including that for you to consider for your budget going forward. It was a great honor to attend the Coast Guard Appreciation Dinner. And I didn't realize that I was conveying to somebody that was a uniformed officer that I was appreciating the Coast Guard and how much we appreciated the Coast Guard because we'd be nothing without their involvement and without their service and everybody that lives here. And I was actually thanking the Vice Admiral, so going to go up the flagpole and I feel very grateful that I got to meet Commander McAllister that way. So that was a great event. I really wanted to thank Jenna and everybody from the chamber who put on that event because it was a real honor to be there and and the all the great ways that we support our Coast Guard community. Just really quickly, I had a chance to tour the landfill and Liche treatment operations, and that was a great opportunity, and I really thank the staff for all their work there. We're beginning to staff are beginning to create some ways that we want to improve the lease between the city and the borough because that's been a lease that we need to renew for a while, so I'll definitely keep the assembly updated about that. I'm working now on a Kodiak Community Garden Land Use Permit because their permit is up, so I'll be working with them and the city and other organizations to try to get that updated. I'm working with the Kodiak College on the Memorandum of Understanding and got a bunch of clarity about every single thing that I heard from the assembly, so I'll bring that MOA back to the assembly. Once we get it finalized and you'll see that clarity, I'll itemize everything that we clarified. And I'll definitely make sure that the Kodiak College President is available to answer any questions that you guys might have. I'm still working on the commercial pa- commercial passenger vessel excess excise tax for the Portland Lou's. Scott, our attorney, wanted to get some clarity about where the Lou's would be located, and so I'm still working with the city on getting that together. Just two more updates. We've had some complaints that are coming in about the fur terrace apartments because they have their waste management bill hasn't been paid, and so you can see that their bins are overflowing and that's on Mill Bay. So we've been getting some complaints about it. We issued a notice to, we are in the process of issuing a notice to the owners. And then I've also reached out to the CEO of one of the organizations that funds that actual and manages that unit. So I hope I can get through to the CEO and get some voluntary compliance before we have to apply fees. But I just wanted the community to know that we're trying to get on top of these complaints about the fur terrace apartments and hopefully get some voluntary compliance. And just lastly, I'll say I'll be happy to plagiarize as much as I possibly can so we can get a pay study and I'll plagiarize from the city side so we I can get that RFP for a pay study to you quickly. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Yeah, also make sure you ask the city if they'll tell you what it cost them so we have a cost I had to put in the budget.
Absolutely.
We talked about a joint meeting with the school district, Roxanne. I can't remember what date we were going to target. I think we talked about it at gender setting. If you could look that up sooner the better. I think we if we should get together and talk to them, they've got a rather healthy ask out there.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Smiley, were you wanting to ask the manager a question?
No.
Okay. All right, well, then we'll move on packet review. Somebody make sure that they tell Mr. Nick Sabo to be there next week. We're going to recognize him for fourteen years of service on the Solid Waste Advisory Board. And I assume we have a plaque or something we're going to give him, Lena. Yep, okay. Then we have the land statement under public hearing, which we've already discussed. And then we go to contracts. And the first one is change order with Jensen Yorba for Peterson Elementary Roof Replacement Design. Staff report, please. Oh, Matt, there you go.
Thank you. I'll take this one. This is a change order with Jensen Yorba Wall to get to sixty five percent design for the Peterson Roof Replacement Projects. We recently you guys recently approved the change orders of thirty five percent. We completed that work and got a cost estimate for the thirty five percent design. So this will go to sixty five percent. We're kind of piecemealing this one to some degree because there's some there's some HVAC equipment on top of the roof that is not in the best location, so part of the sixty five percent design will look at options to relocate that equipment or maybe build a doghouse. But they will look at those options and give us cost estimates on both options. So we can decide which way we want to proceed to get to ninety five and a hundred percent design. This work, design work will be funded by the ARPA funds that we previously received back in last November because it's related to ventilation. And I think that's it, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this one? This one's going to keep coming back to us till we finally do something about that roof. Seeing none, we'll move up to contract FY twenty nineteen ten, and that's design fees for the East Elementary School Roof Replacement.
So this is another change order for Jensen Yorba Wall for another school roof. We're kind of trying to focus on school roofs and exteriors. This one is just to get to a conceptual design for the East Elementary Roof Replacement, mainly the metal portion, the PVC portion, the flat roof was replaced. I think four or five years ago, so that portion is good, but this is the metal roof portion that's been having problems with ice buildup. And there's a weird intersection between the sloped metal roof part of the school and the flat PVC roof, and it's got this weird I don't know how to describe it funky gutter in between that is prone to leaking. So this conceptual design is mainly to look at options to fix that one area. And then once we get through that portion, we'll look at the best way to replace the rest of the metal roof. So it's a five thousand dollar change order for Jensen Yorba Wall, time materials to just do conceptual conceptual design for that one area.
Questions? Okay, seeing none, move on to contract FY twenty twenty two dash thirty landfill stage three closure.
Dave, you want me to do this one or are you on to it?
No, go ahead. I'll comment here at the end.
This is a contract for the stage three closure project, which we've previously discussed. We put it out to bid last November. Bids were open in January. We only got one bid from wrecking construction. But the bid was pretty much near the engineer's estimate, so we're comfortable with the amounts. The bid includes the bid amount was one point two million dollars. And then there's another seven hundred thousand dollars or so that is a unit price to blast and process additional cover rock for future operations of the landfill. So the closure work itself is only about one point two million dollars. The other seven hundred thousand dollars is a unit price for that additional rock. And I will let Dave kind of talk about the funding for this one a little bit.
So we received a letter today from the USDA and I had been telling you all about this. We were hoping that we were going to get grant funds. The grant funds that were available were basically minimal is what I was explained to today by the USDA. However, we have been, we are very close. I have the application commitment paperwork for four point eight million. A low interest loan, one point seven five percent for forty years. So that would be a loan offered to us by the USDA. Now, we haven't received that confirmation yet. However, it is an option that the Borough Assembly can look at and choose. Going back to what Matt has stated about the development of the rock. As long as the Borough can continue to develop its own rock on the landfill site itself. That is the best bang for the rate payers' dollar. The minute we have to start importing rock, the cost is going up, so anytime we're looking at a larger project, we need to consider utilizing the resources that we have specifically on that site. And depending on how this job develops, we may come back and discuss the potential to develop additional rocks, so we need to put six inches of cover by our permit over top of the garbage on a daily basis. We're only allowed to have a certain amount of face open, so it's imperative. I'll also state as a reminder that we have not produced shot rock or done any shot rock contracts since about two thousand twelve, I believe, so we have been working on the rock that was developed for the lateral expansion project. That project basically paid for it. So we're paying in the long term on loans and bonds, but the more rock we can develop today, today. Today's costs are obviously going to be cheaper than tomorrow, so we need to look at what volume we're going to utilize. I also want to say that a good portion of the rock that is being developed is for the closure itself. So we're killing two birds with one stone here, and if there's questions on any of that, I'm Bill.
I think Dave, in twenty twelve, I remember that meeting where it was approved to develop all that extra shot rock. It was the the cost was approved. And the some members of the assembly said it's like putting money in the bank developing that rock now and so that we don't have to pay for it later. So I think that's a pretty good, pretty good bang for your buck. Go ahead, Dave.
So the the other thing I would say is that once that rock is developed and actually put in a pile, it's an asset. When it's in the ground, it's not. So if we develop it, we know we're going to use it. And we're also developing more space for future landfill by developing the rock. So in this case, we're targeting the construction and demolition. And those are the things we need to look at. We need to look to the future continuously.
Okay, any questions of either Matt or Dave? Seeing none. We have a resolution FY twenty twenty two dash twenty identifying federal program priorities. And I can't open those priorities for some reason, so I will let I don't know if Roxanne, you want to handle this or this is Megan also?
I'll give this up to Megan.
This is our annual federal priority resolution. I've worked with Seb O'Kelly at Dan Gilman's, Dan, Brad Gilman's office, sorry. I coordinated with Seb and he wrote the resolution for us. He is available to make some changes if the assembly wishes. So I can let you have your conversation now.
Conversation, James, and then Mr. Smiley.
One thing that I would like to see moved up on the list is number eleven. It's on line two oh six broadband services to rural areas. Excuse me, I don't necessarily think that it needs to go higher than one line one fifty one, but I think that it'd be good to have it in the top ten. I I think, you know, we can have a discussion over that, but just just for information. The company that I work for has a has a facility on the Shalikoff side of the island and they were presented a proposal from GCI for internet. Once the line was drawn through the Shalikoff to put to put a line into the village. It was going to be a million bucks and they were asking the the plant and the community to come up with that million bucks and for the for the for the communities to have to come up with a million bucks just to get a part of that line that's going to be going through there anyway. And the government saying that they're providing this broadband service. It it doesn't make a lot of sense, so it needs to be moved up to where it's to where it's there's more funding for this for the rural communities. That's the only part I have.
Any other comments on that?
Bill, this is Scott.
Go ahead, Scott and then Scott Smiley.
I agree with James. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smiley.
I wondered if the order of these things makes any difference at all. Does anybody know?
Megan, can you answer that question? Or Roxanne?
Well, one thing that I can say is sometimes this stuff at the top catches the attention of any legislator that we hand it to. So that could come in handy if they have a short attention span.
If that's the case, then I'd like to see Tusty number one and Anton move down. I would say I'll give you a list of how I prioritize them if you want me to send that to Megan, if that's okay. Is that the way to do it?
Yeah, why don't you send it to Megan and the clerk and the clerk can disperse it to the rest of the assembly?
Okey doke, I'll do that.
Joseph?
Yes, my comment is that during my time in the villages, the numbering does make a difference, the higher it is on your list.
Hello?
Our priority is to your people and the people around you.
Hello?
Make a difference. I also, like you, Mayor Obers, don't can't access the list myself, but I certainly would like to look at it and see what it looks like.
I I finally did access it, Joseph. If you go to the calendar online and hit on the the seventeenth, it came up. It didn't come up earlier for some reason. I had a problem with my internet, I think, but I got it now, so you might go there and find it. Did I miss anybody? Want to come? Joseph, go ahead.
I dropped off for a while. My cable from the power line to the house is not reliable, so I lost the internet and I couldn't dial in. It kept telling me the meeting wasn't wasn't started yet, so I apologize for that. I'm back now, hopefully for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, Jared?
Yeah, I just want to underscore what what James was saying about the broadband service to rural areas. I would put that up. Number five, number six. It's from education standpoint, workforce training, there's we're missing so many opportunities because of broadband, lack of broadband service and and economic development too. I I would actually almost like to see that as close to the top five if if possible.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I've I've kind of said this before. I'll I'll say it again on line number thirty with the Anton Larson Bay Road Extension Project. I'm a regular weekly user of that road year round. And concerns I brought up before with regards to road maintenance and snow removal or grading. It it it's inconsistent at best, and that's being very generous. It's not a maintained state road, so I I question the priority of it being as high as it is if nobody's going to assume responsibility for regular maintenance on it. Last weekend, two weekends ago, I drove out the the grader made it as far as the ranch. And they only went that far because somebody got stuck in the middle of the road and there was also a tree. And so they went out before they were even going to. I drove with snow up to the grill of my truck to the end of the road. But I also have chains, so I'm equipped to do that, and my fear is you put a road with the idea that it's accessible year round for folks and you're going to get people on that road that have not equipped to get themselves to town. And I think we've run the risk of creating a bigger hazard in that regard unless somebody is going to step up and say, we're going to assume the responsibility for the the road maintenance there. You know, last weekend coming home, I had to hand somebody two chains so they could get off the side of the hill. They were stuck. So I think that's just case in point that I've I've brought up before and I'll keep bringing it up that there needs to be a long term plan for snow removal. And DOT gets there, but they get there when everything else is caught up, so I don't know that we're we're creating a solution. So um, I don't know that we're, we're creating a solution, but maybe we're creating more of a hazard by prioritizing the road.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, it sounds like we have talked about moving the Tustin Minia replacement to number one. Again, I don't know how the funding it for that. I thought we had most of the funding we're going to need, but that might be because I'm naive. Uh, we talk about moving, moving up the uh, broadband to the uh, remote areas, rural areas. Um, I think that might be a, a, a good, a good thing also. I, I agree with the reasoning on that. So uh, if Megan, if you want to play with this a little bit and send it out to the assembly as a whole, maybe next Tuesday or something and people can look at it. Then I urge everybody to send their comments to Megan. We're going to vote on this next week. I don't know if this, this, I don't think this is a high priority. I think we can put it off if we, we want to talk about it more once we start dissecting it. Uh, Megan, is that true? It's not priority?
Um, I heard from Seb this morning and um, next week would be the best time to pass this resolution. Otherwise, we'll have to ask you, the mayor, for a letter in support of what, what the resolution would name.
The, the problem with that is I write and sign a letter, it needs to be approved by the assembly. So he might as well do the resolution.
Right.
Um, the way we get around that, if it's something really simple like a, they want some, a letter of uh, support for expanding uh, the Alutic Museum or something. We, we, if it needs to be done immediately, uh, we have the manager write the letter. It take the E, but it's only when it's something that's so simple that we're not going to have a hard time with getting it through the assembly anyway. But I gotta be really careful signing letters if somebody does not approve. Uh, because we work as a body.
Other than rearrangement of items, other than the rearrangement of items, are there any significant concerns?
I'm not hearing or seeing any, so if you could do something like that, uh, we can, uh, we can mess with it again next week at the regular meeting. Um, but it'd be nice if we have it in a pretty good order. And I think what I hear is the Tustin Minia going up. Uh, I, I understand Jeff's thing about the uh, expansion of the road to Anton Larson. And that is a problem. If we're not going to maintain something, why build it? Or we don't have the money to maintain it. Uh, so maybe that could move down and we could move broadband up into that area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to, we talked about the ordinance FY, introduction FY two thousand twenty-two dash ten. And that's limiting restrictions to the general front property on tax revenues. Then we go to ordinance number FY two thousand twenty-two. You know what? We have a little bit more here. How about if we take a five-minute break? Um, looking for the time, it's eight twenty-three. How about we get back here at eight thirty? Uh, we'll take a five-minute break. I need to get some water. I'm getting dry. And uh, we can get back. Okay, actually, it's eight thirty-one. What am I doing? So uh, we left off with ordinance FY two thousand twenty-two dash eleven, dip disposition of tax foreclosed property. Roxanne?
So I'm hoping this is something that staff can help me out with. Maybe, is it Dora?
Uh, Seema probably or Dora?
I'm not sure.
It's me, it's Dora.
Okay.
So, um, this is part of the annual foreclosure process. We received the clerk's deeds for four different properties. This ordinance in front of you um, confirms two things. One, PNZ's recommendation that these properties do not contain a public need or a public purpose and designates them as surplus to the borough and available to sale. It does not authorize them to be sold. That will come to you at a different point. This just um, makes them available for you to sell them should you wish to in the future. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Assembly questions? I think it's pretty straightforward, but Dora, I, I got a question for you. It's not about this specific ordinance, but uh, there was discussions. I think you were in on it and I don't remember when. Uh, where we were discussing changing how we uh, sell foreclosed properties. So that we are not basically the realtors for the previous owners. And that is we, any profits above what it costs us to sell or fix the property uh, goes to the owners. Were we looking at just selling it for whatever the tax dollar was? Did we ever change that?
Correct. We had just, we had talked about two different ways. If we hold properties for more than ten years, then we, we're not, we don't have to pay that excess back to the original owner. We sell them prior to holding them to ten years, then we do have to pay the excess to the prior owner. Our, part of our code says that we have to sell, anything we sell has to be for market value. And so when these come to the assembly for sale, that's when you'll approve or, or not the change in that temporarily for those specific properties to make them sold at tax value at minimum.
So it'd be a case-by-case basis?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions specific to this uh, ordinance? Naming these properties available for sale? Seeing none. We'll move on. Purchase order for procurement of Fibrok replacement pump for the Kodiak Fisheries Research Facility. Roxanne, is that you or Dave or?
I'll have Dave chime in on this one.
Well, this is kind of unique and, and we'll probably see a few more of these. But the cost of this particular backwash pump is over the manager's signature authority. And this particular code section that we have quoted may not be proper. But basically, we need approval to purchase a thirty-two thousand dollar replacement pump. And it's much easier to come before the assembly and have this conversation now than to go, oops, we should have come and asked. It was okay that we go over the signature authority. So uh, number one, we're asking consideration for permission to do this. But it also poses a question if at any time in the future, if we have these individual, i- individual large cost replacement items, is that something that the assembly needs to approve? So for, for this purpose, we're just informing this, the uh, assembly and requesting permission to uh, procure this replacement pump. And if any, anyone has specific questions on the pump or its function, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, first of all, any questions for Dave? Scott Smiley?
Tell us about the pump.
Well, it's not an exciting one. It's located in the boiler room at KFRC. Um, basically, this is the pump that redirects saltwater back up into the four sand filters that are at the top of the tower. Um, especially most important during the summer out, summer season, when we have algae blooms and whatnot. We capture that algae when we bring in the saltwater and we filter it. So consequently, just like a, a pool, when it gets dirty, we have to backwash those filters. This pump is the age of the facility. It's beginning to uh, show some wear. It's beginning to leak. As soon as I see a leak in a seal and a pump this old, I believe that we need to replace that pump. We get that pump out and we take it apart and examine the internals. And if it's in any condition, we rebuild that pump and have it stored for a critical spare.
And is it made of uh, Monell metal or something like that that resists seawater?
It, it is, and it's all stainless steel interior as far as the uh, race and everything. So yes, this was built for saltwater processes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Let me add this, Dave, to your comments. Maybe um, we need to look at a code change so that we can fix things without, you know, order parts for things that need to be fixed on enterprise funds especially. It doesn't require the managers, uh, it doesn't require the assembly's approval. And the assembly can either say no or yes on that uh, for future use. Does that make sense, Roxanne? You hearing me what I'm saying?
Yes, I am. And one thing you could also, I would just suggest is that it would require a report to the assembly at least.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. When even, we do anything and even on the enterprise properties, uh, the assembly is aware of it. Um, so go ahead, Dave.
Well, and part, one thing I would like to add to what the manager just said is there's a point in time when you have these twenty-plus-year-old things that we need to order these today. We don't need to order them two or three weeks from now when they're on the agenda and we, I've not, I've tried not to, while I've been director, pull the, oh, everything's an emergency thing. So I think there's a bit of a trust issue here, but I also think this is the opportunity to start a conversation.
Okay, well, let's start the conversation. Mr. Smiley?
I'm all in favor of making this a, a de facto approval and then a report back to the assembly. I think that the idea of looking at the existing pump and rebuilding it essentially to serve as a backup in a, in a pinch is a great idea. I also think that viewing what we have now and knowing that we're going to have problems in the future with everything that's mechanical, it only makes sense to start purchasing backups for those situations that could become critical in the future. So I'm
Anybody else? Any other questions about the pump? All right, moving forward. Uh, we have confirmation of mayoral appointments. Uh, reappoint Rebecca Skinner to Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. Uh, another appointment to Tide Gate, uh, Mission Tide Gate. And also, we just added one night tonight to add another appointment to the consolidation committee. So those will all come before you next week for a vote. And with that, we are done with uh, we are done with the packet review. There we go. And we come back to the regular meeting, I mean, to the work session. And we go to Assembly members' comments. That's a hard one. I should have remembered that off the bat. And we'll start from the bottom and work our way up this time. And Scott, you are on the bottom. Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Last week, I talked with Amy Williams about the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council, and she had medical issues this week. And I felt it more appropriate to talk with her as far as her decision on that either first of next week. My feeling would be that I would prefer to put a standing Assembly member on there if they're interested. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I will take that under advisement. So Joseph, you're next.
Yes. Turn this on. I'd just like to say that I'm happy that we're going to be meeting in person. I think tonight's a little snafu, with my internet just proves that although Zoom is great, it works well at times, it still lacks. But also, I'd like to thank the staff again for getting us prepared, getting me prepared for this. I always appreciate the hard work that they go through to get us ready for our meetings and work sessions. So thank you for that. And that's all for tonight.
Okay, Jared?
Yeah, thanks to staff, and especially for, thanks for Megan. Thanks to Megan for putting a lot of this stuff together for us today. I'm not going to be, I'll be absent from next week's meeting. I'll be taking the high school drama and public speaking team up to defend our state championship next week in Anchorage. So I will be listening to the meeting, but I won't, I won't be, I won't get to see everybody in person.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank staff for the efforts put into providing us answers to questions that were raised and the work that went into that. Certainly appreciate that. I certainly appreciate, when I read through the packet review prior to the meeting, the idea of rebuilding a pump if at all possible and looking at having those kind of backups, I think makes a lot of sense. And I think that, you know, as we start looking at the facilities, the more we start seeing things that are aging, that we start planning for that, is important for us to consider doing. So certainly appreciate that thought and effort on that and the documents for our review tonight. So thanks to staff.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Scott Smiley?
I'm glad the other Scott was at the bottom. Just thought I'd rub it in a little. I don't actually have anything. Thank you.
All right. That brings me to my comments, and I'm going to keep them brief. I like the discussion. I like that discussion tonight on rebuilding and having spare parts. I'd like more a discussion in the future on having spare parts identified that would be critical and have them on hand so that we don't have some major breakdown, especially in something like the Fishery Center where we could lose product or lose experimental animals. And it could cost a lot of money. So I think that maybe that's something we should look into. Roxanne and Dave, if you guys want to look at that, spending money ahead of time that we might need, just kind of like building rock that you're going to use in the future. It really is money in the bank, especially because prices are only going to go up on everything. So with that, I am really happy we're meeting in person next week. I hope it's not snowing like crazy like it is right now, or it was when I came down here first, anyway. And I hope you all have a good weekend. And don't slip on the ice. We'll see you next week.